Yep. I was gonna, do you want me to do it under Planning Commission announcements? And I'll just, cool. Commissioners, if we're ready to start. Thanks to Hank and Cree in audio tonight. Let me welcome everybody to a regular scheduled meeting of the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. We're in the Veterans Memorial Building. I'd like to introduce the commission to everybody. First, Vice Chair Mike Rodriguez.
Welcome.
Commissioner Asia King. Commissioner Eric Meyer. And I'm your chairperson tonight, Commissioner William Roshan. And we are all volunteers and very happy to be here with you tonight, and thank you all for coming. I've established the quorum. I'm calling the meeting to order, and if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you all, and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to go to Planning Commission announcements, and I'd like to start with a commission welcome for Kim Fowler, our newest planning staff. Michael, did you want to introduce Kim to us?
Thank you, Chair Roshan and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Michael Codrin, the interim Community Development Director. And yes, thank you. I'm excited to introduce Kim Fowler, who is our interim planning manager. And although I'm interim and will only be here, you know, another month or so, Kim is in for the long haul, and she has just transitioned from senior planner to planning manager with the departure of Cindy Jason. And she's doing a fantastic job so far, and it's no surprise based on, you know, her experience that she brings to bear. So just a little bit about Kim and her background. She graduated from University of California Irvine, but not just, she didn't just graduate like other people do. She actually had three degrees. So Kim has a degree in environmental analysis and design, and that's where the urban and regional planning emphasis comes from. But also has degrees in criminology, law, and science, I'm sorry, criminology, law, and society, as well as psychology and social behavior. So Kim's got us all figured out, and you know, and she's here to help. So that's really the best part of it.
We can use this.
Yeah. Kim has experience in both public sector and private sector, so she understands development as well from the developer side, which is very helpful from a customer service standpoint, but also just, you know, in terms of how to process projects and how to work with applicants. One of her former positions was as Senior Environmental Project Manager. So she's very well versed in CEQA, and will be able to guide the department in those efforts. Kim also loves horses and especially Clyde, who she's looking to board around here, you know, pretty soon. So if anybody has any tips on that, she's all ears. But I appreciate the opportunity to introduce Kim, and we're excited to have her. Thank you.
Yeah, a big welcome. Thank you. And thanks for making it here tonight, so you can see us in action. I got to meet Kim the other day, and you're going through all the most recent Planning Commission meetings. You're looking at the videos, is that right?
Yes, I am. In an effort to better familiarize myself with the city, I've been doing some digging and reviewing a lot of YouTube videos. So I've streamed through the last two years' worth of Planning Commission meetings. So everyone here is kind of like a celebrity to me, because you're all I've seen for the last few weeks.
How you can do more than one a night, I have.
I'm a planner nerd through and through.
Thank you very much. We're excited to have you here. One other commissioner announcement is tonight is a special meeting, and this is the first of four meetings that we're going to do on housing, specifically housing in Morro Bay. The Planning Commission did this on similar issues before. We've done it around some of the tree issues. We've done it around historic preservation in Morro Bay. And so this will be around housing. Asia and I are on the subcommittee. And it's interesting, because we've got a chamber event tomorrow morning that's going to be on housing. And Asia, just two weeks ago, I think, went to another event. This is our first meeting, and then there'll be three more. But Asia, would you want to talk a little bit about the event from two weeks ago?
Yeah. This is the San Luis Obispo County Housing Summit. It was actually mid-March, so it feels like two weeks ago, but it was like four weeks ago.
Got it.
So the city was kind enough to send me to the summit, and it was a really great afternoon with, it was put on by the Slow Chamber, but it was also put on by the, maybe just hosted to some degree by the Association of Realtors, the local Association of Realtors. And it featured a series of speakers and panelists that were from all different walks of housing. And the real focus of the day was on the fact that, you know, California, like much of the nation, is experiencing a housing crisis, and we are in desperate need for more of it. And so the bent of the day was, because the summit was packed full of developers and realtors and people from the financing sector, the discussions were mostly around how do we get more housing built? But a lot of it was around how do we get affordable housing built? And so there were people from local people self-help housing. There was a Silicon Valley CDFI or Community Financing Financial Development Institution. And these are groups that specifically work to develop affordable housing, moderate housing, and workforce housing. And so it was simultaneously terrifying to hear everyone talk, and also really exciting, because it's terrifying, because California has, housing market, as we all know, has gotten really out of control, and we've stopped building. And there's a lot of need for most residents. And so that's, there's some data and some studies and some really great points to learn about that we're going to present in a couple of weeks on a more data-packed presentation that's about this county in particular, but also about Morro Bay in particular, around the housing market, around who's trying to buy houses or rent houses here, what do their incomes look like, what kind of housing supply do we have here? And so we'll present some of that information in a couple of weeks. But I did want to just kind of pull out a couple of the statistics that I heard that day that really resonated. The first is that Slow County as a whole is now one of the most expensive places to live in the United States. And this is not the view of San Luis Obispo that I am used to thinking about. And that description is based on housing, cost of living, housing prices, median housing price compared to median income in the area. And we've surpassed even the Bay Area, which is shocking to me. But incomes are a lot higher in the Bay Area, even while houses in, and LA, and Santa Barbara and San Diego, the prices in these cities are very high for housing, but so are incomes. And so we fall third on the list of California counties of the most unaffordable counties to live in. We're third after Mono and Monterey because of income versus median housing price. So just as a, just as a couple numbers, for a first-time homebuyer to qualify to buy a house in San Luis Obispo County, this was at the end of 2023, the median home price for this type of buyer was $771,000. But to qualify to buy that medium home price, to qualify for a mortgage, you have to make $159,000 a year. And the monthly payment, and this is shocking but also very familiar, because this is why everyone's freaking out about housing being unaffordable, the monthly payment for that mortgage is $5,330 a month. And for people that I know that have bought here, that have kids that work here, that are nurses, Cal Poly professors, plumbers, construction workers, business owners, that's what they're paying every month. And if I'm going to ever buy a house, that's what I have to pay every month. And it's just, I don't even know how with $160,000 a year, you could pay $5,000 a month. And so seeing these numbers written down really brought the reality of our situation to bear and really described it in a great way. So I'm excited about that presentation. Jocelyn, who's our interim chamber director, is going to come and present the data that she has on it, try and put it in terms that we can really understand. And I think what's especially interesting is to look over time at the comparison between the cost of housing in the county compared to the cost, or sorry, compared to the amount of housing we've built and compared to income. So I think it'll become really obvious that these things are not aligning well locally, and that's what's driving up the cost of housing. But the other big takeaway, besides this is the most expensive place to live, or from, mostly from a developer's standpoint, you know, was the importance from, like, what can a city do to help with the crisis? And from a developer's standpoint, the highlight was, you know, consistency, predictability, and timeliness. And I feel like those are things that we've been working on as a city and that we can continue to discuss and work on, so.
Nice. Asia, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Asia regarding that event? I'll tag on with one quick thing. On Monday, you might have seen, there was an article in the LA Times that talked about California's million-dollar cities. That's cities where a house, the average house is now costing a million dollars. California has the most in the nation, of course, 210 cities where the average house is a million dollars.
Yeah, and our stat, median house price in the county, January 2024, was $910,000.
Just this year, three new cities out of 10 were added to the million-dollar list. One was Cambria, the other was Slow, and the other was Royal Grande. So Morro Bay is still not in the million-dollar club, but it's a very real thing, and it's shocking to think of a million dollars as the mean housing price.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Eric.
Just for the sake of discussion, I brought this newspaper, which is 22 years old. This is the Tribune, and it's discussing the housing and crisis we were in in 2002, where, you know, I think one out of five people could, you know, all could afford it. And I think it's probably less than that now by a good measure. But the housing prices at that time, when they were under this huge crisis, the average housing price was under $300,000. Just a big, and now I think it would triple that at least.
Yes. Commissioners, thank you. Asia, thank you very much. Having no other announcements, I'd like to move to public. Of course, Mike.
I just got this information, so Michael may be aware of it, but on May 22nd, the City of Pismo Beach is having a new affordable housing development. You know, I guess they're going to do a celebration there between 12:00 and 1:30. Nope. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. So changed a little bit. Okay, so here we go again. So on May 22nd, from 12:00 to 1:30, Pismo Beach is celebrating a affordable housing development. It's called Pismo Terrace. Michael may be aware of it, since he came from Pismo, but I would recommend, because it's the day after our Planning Commission meeting. I'm going. I want to go check this thing out. So they're building 50 affordable homes. So again, it's on May 22nd, between 12:00 and 1:30 in Pismo Beach. Anything to say about that, Michael, that development?
I'll just highlight that that is a senior affordable housing project. So it's a nice feature. They, it's the second affordable housing project that Pismo's constructed in the past couple of years. Another 50-unit project by People Self-Help Housing Corporation located on Fourth Street. And, you know, similar to what Morro Bay has done with Rock View, it's at Sunset, and, you know, another wonderful.
It's deed-restricted affordability.
That's correct. Below-market housing.
Commissioners, thank you. Jeff Echols, I'll see you tomorrow morning at the breakfast, 7:30. And with that, I'd like to go to public comment. This is a chance for the public to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, or if you have to leave. Any takers? Welcome, Betty.
Good evening, Betty Winholz. Couple of things. First, I want to announce, if we had an overhead, that this Saturday, there will be a blessing of the animals out at the Methodist Church, which is next to Delmore Elementary. It's from 10:00 to noon, and there'll be treats for the dogs, as well as treats for the two-leggeds. So all are welcome, blessing of the animals, whether it's a dog, cat, turtle, whatever, you can get there. The second thing I would like to note is that another tree company was cutting trees without a permit today out at Delmore on the school district. And so I just really want to reinforce, particularly North Morro Bay, who's had the most trauma lately, that this is nesting season. We do not cut or trim trees until June. So please don't go there or ask people to do that for you. And then my last question is, I just want to make sure that there will be a comment after the business on C1, right? That we'll be able to talk about.
Yes, the housing presentation, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Betty. Any response, Michael, on the tree trimming?
I don't really have a response, other than my understanding is that it was a school district effort, and the school district is a superior agency, so they don't need to come to the city for permits.
For permits, yeah.
It's important information to share for the community.
Thank you. Jeff, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and city staff. My name is Jeff Echols. I'm a resident of North Morro Bay. Welcome to our new staff member, Kim. It's a pleasure to have you here. I am the CEO of the Housing Trust Fund of San Luis Obispo County. And I feel, Bill, like you queued me up to remind folks that there is a meeting tomorrow morning. It's the Chamber of Commerce, the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce Breakfast on the Bay. It happens once a month. And their subject matter tomorrow is housing, and all things housing-related. So I, as well as a speaker from Haslow and Capslow, and I think a few other folks will be speaking at that meeting. So for those at home watching live, that will be on Wednesday, April 17th, is that tomorrow? April 17th at 7:30 a.m. at the Community Center. A nominal charge for your breakfast. It's a great breakfast, and we hope to see anyone there. A few other comments just relative to housing issues. Thank you, Asia, for those statistics. And yes, it's a fact that over the last five years at least, we're either number two or number three in terms of the least affordable counties, county out of the 58 in our state. And Eric, the Housing Trust Fund was founded 20 years ago. And when I go back and read our founding documents, it's both inspiring and despairing at the same time, because the narrative that was presented 20 years ago is very similar to the narrative that we hear today, which is we need homes for particularly our workforce. I would like to say that we've made a significant process. I don't know that I can say significant. I can say that we are making progress. I'll close just by giving you a plug for the Housing Trust Fund of San Luis Obispo County. We are celebrating our 20-year anniversary this year. We are a nonprofit. We're a 501(c)(3) lender, and we lend for affordable housing developments within the county. We've loaned money for several developments here in Morro Bay. We didn't do the latest Haslow property off 41st, because that one didn't require the funding resources that we bring to the table. But we have funded several other developments here in Morro Bay. So I look forward to your presentation tonight, and if anyone can make the chamber breakfast tomorrow morning to continue the discussion about housing, we'll see you then. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks to the chamber for doing the housing thing, too. It's a, there's a good synergy right now of a number of efforts in the city, so I think it's exciting. Let's see. Hank, anybody in the queue?
Hi, Board Chair Roshan. There are no raised hands in the queue right now.
So with that, I'll close the public comment period. If we can go to the consent calendar, please. I do have one issue with the minutes from February 20th. It has me and Eric down as the subcommittee around the master plan, and it's actually Asia and Eric that are going to do the subcommittee. Did you notice that, Asia? So if we could make that correction, Michael? Any other corrections to the minutes?
And I was going to ask, I was going to ask the chair if we could split these minutes, because I won't be voting on the second ones, because I was in here.
I'll do that.
We could approve that one first.
Do we have a motion to approve February 20th?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Mike seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion for March 5th, please?
So moved.
Yeah. Just for the record, I will abstain. I did not attend the meeting, but I did Zoom it and watched it, the whole thing from home, got the packet, got all that great information from the students.
You saw a good meeting.
So I just, I'm just sorry, I couldn't call in and ask questions.
And there's no reason to abstain. You're welcome to vote on those minutes, especially since you watched the video. There's no issue.
Okay, well, I was there, just.
I'll second it.
Asia second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other comments regarding the consent calendar? Hearing none, public hearings, we have none. Onto new business. Very excited to, that Michael Codrin has offered to do this for us. There is a package that's really pretty helpful, going over a number of these issues. And I'll just mention again, this is the first of four meetings that the Planning Commission intends to do on housing and attainable housing. And with that, Michael, please, thank you so much for your help.
Thank you, Chair Rosen, and I'll be giving the presentation along with Susannah Toner from our department. She's an assistant planner and was the one that completed the HCD annual report, so she'll be able to share some information with you on that. And really just starting a conversation, I think, tonight on housing. It's something that seems, as I've come to Morro Bay and been part of community discussions and seen all the work that was completed with respect to Plan Morro Bay and other efforts, a lot of planning has gone on over the past several.
You might want to speak a little bit more into the mic, if you could, for me, Michael.
A lot of planning has gone on over the last several years. And so just wanted to kind of focus tonight a little bit on what, on some actions, in particular, as it relates to affordable housing, that I think would be very helpful. But let's, you know, just to start out, this first slide just highlights that housing is a budget goal for the city council during this fiscal year. And that's an important thing to consider, because the work program for community development, for the Community Development Department comes, you know, straight from the resources that are provided in the budget. And what we work to accomplish here are the council goals. And in this case, of course, they're very consistent. The housing goal is very consistent with the city's housing element and Plan Morro Bay and what we're trying to accomplish there for the community. So with that, I will turn it over to Susannah, who will take, give us a little bit of a briefing on the annual report.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is, this table right here is an excerpt from Table B of the annual report to HCD. It just shows our RENA numbers and how we contributed to them by year, more specifically. And it shows that we added 12 units to our RENA numbers in 2023. Something that I did want to point out is that our new zoning code was certified by Coastal Commission in March of this year, so March 2024. And a lot of projects, both housing and otherwise, were waiting for that new code to go through. So a lot of projects were kind of on hold for a lot of 2023, so we're hoping to see that number go back up to previous year's numbers in 2024.
And just to put that in a little bit of context, in terms of what our regional housing need allocation is in total, we have a total of 391 units that are to be constructed or that we have planned to enable to be constructed, since the city doesn't build housing per se. It's private property owners and developers that contribute housing. And, you know, in terms of what's remaining, there's a significant portion that are below-market rate units. So very low units, 71, low income, 52, moderate, 43, and then above moderate, these are the market rate units, 77. So out of the 243, you know, well over 150 are, need to be affordable, which means deed-restricted as affordable. All right. So current affordable unit production does come from a couple of different areas. You know, one is accessory dwelling units, and these actually, these aren't deed-restricted, but based on a county-wide study, we are able to count accessory dwelling units as affordable units on a percentage basis and depending on the unit itself. So we do a qualitative analysis. We look at the size of the unit and determine whether it's a low-income or moderate-income unit based on that. And that's based on a county-wide study that enables that approach. Separately, the city supports affordable housing projects, and a great example is Rock View at Sunset, which was a 50-unit affordable housing project. Provides large increments of deeply affordable housing, including homeless transitional housing in fully furnished units, in addition to low and very low-income units. And this was a project that was developed by the Housing Authority of San Luis Obispo County with a lot of partnership from other, even market-rate developers of housing in the community, and is successful from the standpoint of housing, a segment of the community that can't otherwise access housing. And it's a completed project that is now occupied. An important piece of information that I really want to share, and I think if we're going to have a number of conversations around housing, it's important to understand that market-rate housing is not affordable. There's no way to construct new housing in the community, new housing projects, and have them truly be affordable. And a lot of that conclusion is based on the study that was attached to the agenda report, working with the market, understanding and supporting affordable by-design housing in San Luis Obispo County. There's a strong desire in the county, a lot of jurisdictions share this in common, of wanting to build smaller, more attainable units. As Asia described, San Luis Obispo County is very much unaffordable, and yet it's the place everybody wants to be. This is one of the most beautiful places you could live, not just in the United States, but really in the world, right? If you had your druthers, where you would live, Morro Bay is probably going to be pretty high on the list. But housing is not affordable if you are in the workforce in particular. Right now, we're experiencing a particularly difficult period of time for prospective homeowners because of interest rates. Not only are interest rates high, which is affecting your ability to, you know, qualify for a mortgage, but interest rates used to be low, and most people, you know, that are in their home right now are enjoying very, very low interest rates, and they're essentially stuck in those homes, right? So there is an article in the New York Times recently to this effect, that a huge number of homeowners, you know, have mortgage rates that are too good to give up. And so that normal trickle, trickle-up effect that you see in housing markets, where people move out of their starter homes, and that home then is at the lower end of the market and available. and available for a renter or for a new family to move into, there's much less supply of that type of housing on the market today. I think one of the things that I've recognized from housing conversations in this county is that a lot of times we're talking about the workforce and that there's a goal to have housing that is for the workforce, but we're not really spending a lot of time thinking or looking at who the workforce is. And I'm speaking about the pure definition of the word workforce, like who are the workers that come to Morro Bay on a daily basis? There is this category of housing, it's not on this table because it's something that the county has done separately from what HUD and what the state regulates as affordable housing, but there is a term workforce housing that is above moderate housing, but not necessarily market rate. And that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about who is the workforce in Morro Bay that, you know, needs housing? Morro Bay is largely made of service and hospitality workers who commute long distances for work, right? So our workforce is coming into Morro Bay on a daily basis. And providing more housing opportunity for that workforce is good both for the social fabric of the community so that our residents, you know, really reflect the larger community. But also it's good for the environment to the extent that you can reduce commute, that's your, you know, fewer vehicle miles traveled. And those kinds of projects are supported by SlowCog, they're supported under state environmental law and providing housing close to work and especially housing that suits that workforce is a goal of housing elements, including our housing element across California. So one thing, you know, in looking at affordable housing is what are the opportunity sites? And just looking specifically at existing city documents, there is a large number of opportunity sites that have been identified. And who is it that would be, you know, building this below market rate housing? There are developers in the county that specialize in this and do an excellent job. So the Housing Authority of San Luis Obispo County, People's Self-Help Housing Corporation, as well as Habitat for Humanity have all built large numbers of very successful housing projects here in San Luis Obispo County, including in Morro Bay with respect to Haslow. The opportunity sites are from the housing element and from the downtown and waterfront strategic plan. And the city has an opportunity, you know, to make these projects competitive and successful through its financial participation. So the city has funds that we've collected through in lieu fee pro, through the in lieu fee program that we are able to commit to development projects and support their ability to be competitive and successful. And when I say competitive, what I'm specifically referring to is the, the tax credit funding process that affordable housing developers avail themselves of. And so both at the federal level and the state, there is great support for affordable housing tax credits, which allows major corporations, hedge funds, you know, people that have significant tax liabilities to partner with affordable housing projects, fund their acquisition and construction costs, and then receive significant benefits against their tax liability for those efforts. And it's a mechanism that is the number one driver of affordable housing projects, especially in California. But it's a, it's a tool that's utilized wherever you have these kinds of situations where, where housing just isn't affordable. And just, you know, going back to Asia's comments with respect to, you know, a $700,000 home and needing to earn $160,000 a year, if, if you're making 100, if the household is making $160,000 a year but is in a $700,000 home with a significant mortgage, you know, that's being house poor, as they say, right? So way more than a third of your income is going towards housing. And people are doing that today. People are spending even up more than half of their income on housing because they still consider it to be that kind of foundation of intergenerational wealth. It's the best investment, the most important investment that most people will make in terms of buying a single family home. And the history of real estate in the US shows that that's a good investment because prices, you know, do, do continue to rise with, with few exceptions. But it's a great sacrifice that people are affording homes where you're spending over 50% on your rent or on your, on your mortgage. And you're sacrificing your, your physical health, your mental health, and a variety of other challenges emerge if you're, if you're living in that situation. And that's why HUD and the federal government has stood pretty strongly on their definitions of affordable housing. And just kind of going back to what those numbers look like, a low income family in San Luis Obispo County, and these are the numbers that Morro Bay uses, so this is a four-person household making $92,650 a year, so this isn't, that's not an amount that you would normally think of, I think, as low income. And I really want to point that out to people, that, that you have to be making really close to that amount to be able to qualify for affordable housing because it's competitive and you've got to show that you've got income. You've got to show that you're gonna make rent. The rents are not, they're subsidized, but they're still in this range of $1,832 a month for a three-bedroom for a low-income family renting a three-bedroom. So that's not, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, we're not talking about, you know, exclusively people that are homeless coming off the street. That's a very small percentage of the need and of the actual occupants of these projects. These are people that are working often multiple jobs and there just simply isn't the housing supply for them to be able to live close to where they work or even in the same county in a lot of circumstances. And so that's the, that's the workforce and that's really who we should be thinking about in terms of where the need for housing is for a variety of reasons that I've mentioned. And so my conclusion here really is that after several years of planning, that the city of Morro Bay has done very successfully, a shift is, can occur now towards implementation. The housing element in particular, and I included, you know, just one chapter of implementation items under, you know, housing supply. You know, the Community Development Department is, is responsible for a large number of those implementation items. And prioritizing affordable housing is the most important thing Morro Bay can do to accomplish its housing goals. And I say that because it really is the number one implementation action in the housing element, that the city will make affordable housing projects the highest priority of residential development. So this is what I've discovered, I have a background in housing, but coming to Morro Bay, I've kind of did a, did a dive into some of the planning documents and had a lot of conversations to try to understand where the community is at. And I just wanted to make these points as it relates to below market rate housing, especially the type of housing constructed by our affordable housing developers in our community and that there are opportunity sites. And I think we, we ought to be partnering with those folks to develop more of that type of housing here. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and happy to answer any questions that the commission might have.
I have one question, just for Michael, just to make sure I'm looking at the right thing, because I looked at this one more time before the meeting started, all these action plans and who's gonna do it, right? You were gonna do this, right? The Community Development Manager was gonna do a lot of this work, right? So.
Yeah, that's correct. And Community Development is a, is a small department. Obviously, we're going through a lot of transition right now, recruiting for a director. We'll be recruiting for a new senior planner here shortly as well. And so these projects, these implementation actions, to the extent that they require resources, need to be requested through the budget process.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to clarify that because that may slow our, slow us down or depending on how we approach this, because there's a lot of work to be done and this is only one chapter.
Yeah, absolutely.
Michael, I have a quick question. As part of your report, you included the affordable by design housing study for, for Slow County. Would you want to take us, walk us through that and talk a little bit about it? There are some encouraging things here. I know that maybe we've not had great success with it, but Commissioners, did you all have a chance to read the affordable by design document? I think it might be worth five minutes with the public. Would you walk us through it?
Yeah, I'm happy to. And, you know, this is a document that all of the cities, you know, are reflected in this document. It was prepared for the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments. You may be aware that the Council of Governments is very focused on housing, especially with their role in terms of approving and allocating transportation funding. They're making a specific effort to allocate transportation funding to where the housing is going to be to facilitate that. And that's a sort of proactive approach that they're taking. And this is a report that was commissioned to try to get a sense of whether it would be possible for the market to produce affordable housing. And the conclusions generally are no, that, that there are some places where market rents may be borderline affordable to moderate income households, but that construction costs, land costs, the unpredictability of the process in a lot of jurisdictions makes development and the return on investment such that you don't see a lot of new housing projects like this beginning. And so what this report does is it looks at specific prototypes of affordable by design housing, higher density products, more vertical housing, three and four-story apartment buildings and, and that kind of thing. And then assesses in the different portions, you know, in North County, North Coast, Central and Southern County, what, what the potential is. And so I encourage people to take a look at it. It goes through a range of issues. The executive summary is, you know, very informative itself. It talks about the value of objective design standards, for example, which Morro Bay now has for qualifying affordable housing projects. And objective design standards are just one, another way that a developer can have some predictability to the process as opposed to being subjected to a design review. If they meet the objective design standards, they can move forward to a building permit without that level of review. So ministerial approvals, streamlined approval processes, you know, density limits and parking requirements they're finding are restrictions to providing affordable housing. And that's an area, you know, of discussion in terms of, you know, density limits and density bonus. That's a topic actually that the city council is interested in hearing more about because there is an assembly bill in Sacramento right now that would allow for density bonus law to be applied in the coastal zone. It would eliminate provisions of the density bonus law that essentially put it under the coastal.
We haven't heard back on that because that's currently happening right now.
That's currently happening right now. Yeah. And, and so the city council is interested in, in hearing more about that. But what density bonuses do, or what the density bonus law does, is it allows in exchange for affordable, like deed restricted affordable housing, for property owners and developers to build more of that type of housing with fewer restrictions. So there are concessions for height, for parking, and for other aspects of the development that help make that type of housing more economically feasible for development.
Right. And just to sort of, like to summarize that one more time, the big thing is ministerial so that it's not reviewable, right? And that is an expedite. That in a way helps developers not just get it done quickly, but get it done with certainty.
Right. And that really doesn't exist here, you know, because of, because we're entirely in the coastal zone.
And just to compare, we have some ministerial approvals, but it's very limited.
Right, administrative.
Slow has, has opened it wide up, I think, right?
Yeah, it's a different environment there.
What's, what's the, the thresholds at Slow for ministerial? In other words, how many units, I think? You can do up to any number of units with ministerial approval?
No, there's, let's see, I'm not gonna be able to recall all the thresholds right off the top of my head, but, you know, it used to be that if you were building new housing in San Luis Obispo, anything more than a single unit, you were subject to architectural review. So this is going back several years. Now you can do up to a 50-unit subdivision and that can be approved by staff with an administrative hearing.
Got it.
As opposed to a planning commission hearing. So that's just one example. But that's not applicable here, that's not really as relevant for Morro Bay, both because there isn't as much growth potential that is outlined in the general plan and also because of coastal zone and other restrictions. There's very limited growth potential overall in Morro Bay and that's, that's what your plan shows. And so really what I think this report highlights and what I'm trying to focus on with my presentation is that with that limited increment of additional growth, that if the focus would be on affordable housing, then you would be closer to achieving the goals that are in the housing element.
So you're really focusing us more on deed restricted housing than any sort of market rate solution?
That would be my recommendation.
And can I ask a clarifying question?
Go ahead.
Michael, we've talked about it, the council has talked about it, and that's our approach. So does Morro Bay go at this alone or do we look at a regional approach to get the greatest number of units? That's just, that was one of my questions I was gonna ask eventually, I'm just gonna ask it now. So do we focus on a, let's go ahead at it alone or do we use a regional approach to get the greatest number of units?
Sure, and there is, there is a lot of thinking going along those lines. I think that's a big part of SlowCog's approach in terms of how it's going to steer infrastructure funding related to where the affordable housing is gonna be located and it's not gonna be in every community.
Yeah. And the, the other reason I ask that is because when you talked about transportation, I mean, there's a lot of dollars if you can build transportation into these projects where you can move people. We don't have any of that. You know, the Bay Area, they have it everywhere, right? Money's being thrown at the Bay Area because they have a Bart, they have Caltrain, they have a great bus system. So that money's there from the state and the federal government to support that kind of development if you've got everything working together, right? So we need to build in that as part of our goal, I guess, right? Is to build in more transportation somehow?
I, I mean, I agree that transportation is really important and that, that's something that, you know, should, should generally be a focus. But in terms of the thresholds that the state has put out there to enable transit-oriented development and, you know, they, the state, there are a number of state laws that really, if you are in a transit-rich environment, in a transportation-rich environment, like where you have sub 15-minute headways for your bus system or your train system, then the state laws, you know, really enable you to do quite a bit in terms of density and other kinds of development. That's not really what we're, you know, San Luis Obispo, the city of San Luis Obispo doesn't have 15-minute headways, you know, so there are no areas there that even meet that. So those Bay Area and Southern California examples, yeah, that's, that's what, you know, just going back to what you were saying in terms of the housing, where the infrastructure is, I mean, writ large, like across the state, that, that is the strategy. I mean, most of the housing is going in the Bay Area and in Los Angeles area and in those urban areas where there is.
And as our council moves forward and trying to use a regional approach, is there a way for us to build in more transportation into county in a regional approach? Because there's none. You don't, everybody drives in San Luis Obispo, everybody drives to their destination. Is there an opportunity?
Yeah. Well, it's a good question.
That's, that's what it's all about.
So here, I'm gonna keep this, these are clarification questions now and then we can have a broader discussion later. But other, for Michael and Susannah, Eric, any clarification questions?
Questions you won't have the answers for, but I'm gonna ask them because I want you to have the answers in the future. And so Morro Bay, strictly from sort of a seat of the pants perspective, has seen the population very, very micro increases over time and I suspect that of late, although I haven't looked at the most recent census data, it's probably a decrease. When I just look at the number of humans per house and then the number of second homes and the number of actually empty homes, there's quite a few actually empty homes in Slow that are just essentially land banking. And I've seen several in my neighborhood that have been empty for five, 10 years. And, and just looking around town, I see quite a number of homes, probably at least 10, maybe between 10 and 15%, maybe 20% in some areas that are second homes. 10, maybe between 10 and 15%, maybe 20% in some areas, that are second homes. I guess my question would be, do we have any sort of data that can, that can show how many homes are vacant, how many homes are second homes, and look at that over time relative to our population? So we keep, we keep adding houses, we keep adding because we, eventually, RENA numbers get enacted, and then people build to the RENA numbers. But is that actually changing the situation? Are we just selling more houses to more land bankers, or selling more houses as second homes, and essentially treading water? The article that I was reading from 20 years ago was basically saying something to the fact of, all we can do is essentially try to tread water to keep this, it's almost impossible to get ahead, but at least we can tread water. And I'm kind of, would like to see the, the statistics of where we're at, given that.
Yeah, there is analysis we can do on that. So you can look at who's taking the homeowner exemption, which means the house is owner-occupied. You can look at utility bills and see if it matches the owner record. And through just, just those two data sources, you can kind of triangulate and figure out homes that are empty and homes that are owner-occupied and homes that are rented.
I'll bring that up later when we're actually in more of the pontification mode.
Asia, any clarification questions? So with that, Michael, thank you. Susanna, thank you. I'm going to open it up to public comment, and then we'll have a discussion following public comment. I'm sure, Terry, can we start with you? Or, oh, Bill, come on up. Welcome, Bill.
First comment is, I think it's still in business, but the Clydesdales are up in Cambria. Just to let you know, which you probably already know. But welcome to Morro Bay. As far as affordable housing, like Eric, you know, this has been talked about forever. Maybe an example was when I first came to Morro Bay, we were in Cayucus. The average beach house there was 35,000, oceanfront. Across the street was 15,000. Now the, across the street are 2 million. So I don't know if you're ever going to catch up to affordable. But I've always said that if you want affordable housing, it may not be the best form, but the most affordable form is like your RV, mobile home parks, and they are very simple to do, and you'll house the most amount of people that can afford them. So if you truly want affordable housing, I think you probably want to look in the direction of possibly annexing or looking for property inside the city limits would accommodate more RV, mobile home parks, because that's truly about the only form of affordable housing in California at this point. Thank you.
Bill, thanks. Michael, can I ask you a quick question on, on mobile home? Is that, can that be private land? Is that under jurisdiction of the county? Can it be under, I've read somehow the mobile home parks are not under the city jurisdiction. Is that wrong?
Well, so mobile home parks can be located anywhere on private property.
Right.
They are regulated by the state.
State-regulated.
Right. So the city, you know, in terms of mobile homes, would only issue permits for utilities, you know, site work, foundations, but nothing else.
Interesting.
So we don't control density, we don't control the normal aspects of development in a mobile home park.
Does the city control zoning around where the mobile home parks could be?
Yes, and there are limits to what our authority is. And, you know, I say that not having studied it for Morro Bay and understanding how the coastal zone may impact that, but typically, yes.
Because I know Slow has done some interesting density projects with pre-manufactured units right in Slow, but they are state-regulated, so they weren't done through the city.
That's right.
Got it. Thanks. Terry, welcome.
For your request. First off, at the risk of sounding derogatory, but I'm not, generally when we have a presentation by staff that includes slides, those slides are included in our staff report, I try to follow the slides on my computer, which I couldn't do tonight because the staff report that was released last week doesn't follow the staff report, the staff presentation that was done tonight. And I understand that the planning department is still in flux and these things, but hopefully going forward, there'll be an attempt to make sure that the staff report includes what staff's going to present. Bits and pieces are in this presentation, but generally, it's a literal slide-by-slide that's on the staff report. Having said that, hopefully I didn't burn up too much of my time.
Quickly, can we restart the three minutes for Terry? Thank you.
There's a, there's a concept that's batted around a lot about affordable by design. I would argue that the 15-year process to create a plan, Morro Bay Master Plan and Implementation Plan have, for all practical purposes, become an unaffordable by design program. And as we move forward with this discussion of housing, I'll bring forward specific projects that I've been working on for a while, that I hope will demonstrate some of the flaws, if you will, in the land use plan, and more specifically, the disconnect between the land use plan and the implementation plan. Because as they say in the world of contracts, the big, the big letters tell you what you get, and then the little letters take it all away. And I would say that our land use plan tends to show glowing opportunity, but when cross-referenced with the actual implementation plan, most recently approved, significant reductions of what is promised in the land use plan have been taken out. Whether that was by design, by coastal commission requirement, I don't know. I haven't been able to follow it. But I, I do have three projects I'm going to be bringing forward for discussion as we move forward. One of those projects involves the development of ultra-low-income housing in what's commonly referred to as the ditch. Okay? This has been a controversial area along Quintana that was, until very recently, housing the absolute bottom of the housing need. We had an agreement with the county of San Luis Obispo, which they basically walked away from because when they got their $13 million, they took the million and a half that was dedicated for our project and put it, lumped it into a project in San Luis. So that's one of the things that you fight with in this whole business, is trying to have reliable commitments from the parties involved. Another project that I'm working on is basically a onsite workforce housing for a local business. It happens to be a gas station, but they have a large amount of surplus land, and the owner hires people to work in his, in his facility, and it would be beneficial to him and his employees if they could live on site. So we're going to be proposing a three-story tower to provide employment housing for the business itself. This is not rent-controlled, it's not market rate, it's not deed-restricted, it's simply for the benefit of the property owner in the business to provide housing for his employees. And then the last project that I'm going to be bringing forward is a church project. And churches, as I'm sure some of you know, are categorically exempt in so many directions that they have real opportunity, but nobody seems to want to help churches. The church that I'm working with has an extremely large parking lot, about 10,000 square feet, which would be available for development and could house retired and disabled members of the church community itself.
Got it. Thank you, Terry.
Anyway, more coming. It would be helpful if we had an outline going forward so we knew what these next three meetings.
We don't know yet, so yes.
Okay, when you can.
Welcome, good to see you.
Thanks, Planning Commission and staff. My name is Sean Green, Morro Bay. I'm going to start off by saying, anecdotally, with the sort of boom in construction in San Luis Obispo, prices at the market rate have become a little, a little bit more level in the last year or two as supply has, has peaked. And so when we talk about affordable housing, certainly we throw that, that term around, and we're talking about deed-restricted, very low income, low income, all the way to moderate, and workforce housing at the market rate. In terms of, in terms of supply here in Morro Bay, I was part of the Vacation Rental Ordinance Committee, and I think it's, I think it's worth mentioning that we have a halfway decent ordinance that was, that was put into place as far as enforcement of that ordinance. That's something that we need to continue working on, and I would, I'd love to be part of that sort of fine-tuning process now that we're approaching the five-year mark of implementation of the Vacation Rental Ordinance. I also wanted to mention that about one to two multifamily housing, existing buildings in the downtown area have converted to vacation rentals within the last eight years or so. It's usually about one per year, and these are non-conforming residential in commercial districts that I believe community developments practice is to issue them vacation rental permits simply because they're part of the commercial zoning. There does need to be some clarification as to what the uses of these types of buildings because we have this 30-day transient limit, sometimes, that 30-day mark becomes an important one, and what the long-term use of these structures is, and whether or not they are allowed to simply evict folks based on the non-conforming existing building. Speaking of which, motel conversion, I think, is an important consideration for, for affordable housing. We seem to go, be going in the opposite direction, other than the one project on Main Street in North Morro Bay, which does provide a kind of housing for a certain community. Planning waivers, fee waivers continue to be an option for incentivizing certain kinds of development. The downtown design district, obviously, and the talk of whether or not we're going to 37 feet, plays a hugely important role here in housing in general. And as part of the Public Benefits Subcommittee, we created a process whereby planned development-zoned projects can offer additional public benefit for certain exceptions to be, to be built. I have 15 seconds left, so I'm going to rush through the last couple items. Mobile home parks is a huge issue here in Morro Bay, and we rely on them. They've been such an asset to the city, and in recent years, whether it's changes of ownership and whatnot, have created an increasingly onerous and adversarial situation between residents living in fear and owners that continue to push the limits of that project. And lastly, I'll mention the Morro Elementary Opportunity Site. We have to have a seat at the table with the school district in terms of developing that project. Thank you.
Betty Winholz, thank you, Mr. Meyer, for your question. I think it's critical, and I like a lot of what Mr. Green had to say. I think that, I need to be able to read my notes better. Morro Bay, and I like the idea that we can find out what kind of housing we have in town. It's really impossible to have market rate here. It's so expensive to be here. I think we need to find out if we can, once we find out what kind of housing we have here, is it legal to restrict some of those kinds of housing? I think we need to ask that legal question about second homes, about empty homes, about the conversions that's happening in the mobile home parks, the downtown that was just referred to. I think there's some legal questions that we need to ask our attorney to step into and address, please. I don't know about the, both Mr. Simons talked about the small homes. We haven't talked about homelessness and getting that part of the, is that will be part of one of the next three items before the city Planning Commission, will you be addressing that as well? I, I have, I know that the ADUs are not legally allowed to be vacation rentals in Morro Bay, but we also know that ADUs and vacation rental, I should say vacation rentals are not being enforced, the rules, in Morro Bay. So I believe that there are a number of ADUs that are being used as vacation rentals. And so I think that vacation rental aspect needs to also be part of this discussion, and whether we know that the state has told us that if we take back our vacation rentals and turn them back into housing, that doesn't count towards our 391 units. And whether it does or not, it certainly would provide more housing, which is what we need regardless of what the state thinks. So I, I think the vacation rentals is pertinent to this topic. And then lastly, in terms of parking, I know the state's going to make that really difficult for us, which tells me, I think, that we need to look at our street parking and where residents have built out into the street, and they've gotten permits to do that and have paid to do that because of landscaping or paving or whatever, that at some point, as we maybe get more dense, that we need to have those people pushed back to their property lines so we actually have street parking that will accommodate these new houses that may not be required to have parking.
Great. Thank you, Betty, very much. Michael, can I ask a quick response? Betty raised the, the issue of legal, and while we have you as interim, have you ever heard of restrictions on second homes, on vacant homes? Has there ever been any consideration like that that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of it, doesn't mean it doesn't exist, so certainly we'll look into that. I know in commercial districts, vacant storefronts can be taxed, and that that's an economic development initiative. I haven't heard of a program as it relates to second homes or vacant homes, but we can look into it.
Okay, thank you. Asia, do you have a question?
Yeah, vacant home restrictions or laws or policies are, like, often in California are mostly around, like, derelict properties.
Right.
Or properties that have sat, sat empty and are owned by banks and large corporations, and they're often, the ones I can think of are just taxed, so it's fees, but it doesn't go so far as to disallow, legally disallow.
No.
But I have a really quick follow-up question about, Betty said that it's illegal to have ADUs as vacation rentals. And does that go, does that just mean all ADUs that are being built, or ones, I know that we have to have a permit for a vacation rental here, and so that applies to all ADUs?
Well, you're talking about permitted ADUs, right?
Yeah, all permitted ADUs, it's a condition of approval on their coastal development permit that they are not allowed to be used for rentals shorter than 30 days.
Yeah. Thanks, Susanna. Anybody else who would like to speak? Oh, good, Jeff.
Good evening, Commissioners and City Staff, Jeff Egles, North Morro Bay. So I've been deeply involved with housing advocacy and legislation for the last decade or so at the state, county, state and county level. So just a couple of observations. Commissioner Rodriguez was asking about regional approaches. It was before the pandemic, I think 2018, I want to say, maybe 19, the city, the Morro Bay City Council voted to join what was, is called the Regional Compact that was spearheaded by Slocog. And then just recently, within the last 12 months, the Morro Bay City Council affirmed their involvement or their signing on to the Regional Compact at the county level. So that deals primarily with infrastructure, but also feathers into the housing issues at a countywide effort. So there, there have been a tremendous amount of regional efforts over the last, particularly five years with regard to housing. Secondly, my last observation is with regard to our interim director's recommendation of prioritizing affordable housing as the most important thing that Morro Bay can do to accomplish its housing element goals. I would just flavor that with a, with a cautionary note at the same time. With housing policy, we, many of you have heard this, there's no silver bullet. We always look for the silver bullet, and there is none. So a cautionary note that we don't look for one particular aspect. It tends to be an all-of-the-above approach that is more efficient. And with Morro Bay, I'll say this, with regard to affordable housing, we have to remember what the definition of affordable housing is. Affordable housing is subsidized housing. We're talking about deed restricting, deed-restricted subsidized housing. Where does that subsidy come from? That comes from the jurisdiction. That comes from the jurisdiction and other agencies. So as one of the smallest jurisdictions in the county, we have, we, we don't have an abundance of resources to commit to subsidized housing. So we need to be careful about looking at going down that path. Lastly, what can help, and you've, you've spoken about it tonight, and it's in the director's report, is specific items like the zoning and the timelines. So I would encourage you to look at actionable items that can be put in place over the next 18 months. And no more than three. Work on those three items, get them done in the next 18 months, and you'll move the dial. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Others? Going once. Hank, anybody in the queue?
Hey, Board Chair Boshin, there are five people on Zoom, but no raised hands.
Ah, okay. So if that's it, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period. And thank you all very much. I think one of our ambitions is to hear from you and then figure out what the next three sessions might look like, what's the best opportunities and focus. So if we could keep that in mind as we go through our discussion. Eric, can I start with you?
A number of years ago, at one of the other housing forums, I gave a short speech on the housing ladder. And I want to just talk about that briefly. Currently, what people consider the smallest unit is typically a studio. But the studio is actually the fourth tier of the housing ladder, of which there's seven tiers. And the first four are no longer really even, you don't hear about them anymore. But if you imagine yourself as, let's say, an Irishman leaving, leaving Ireland during the potato famine in 1900, or whenever that was, and you come across on your, on your boat with a dollar in your pocket, and you land in New York, where did you go when you first wanted to get a place to sleep? Well, you went to what's commonly referred to as a flop house, but is otherwise known as a hotel, a residence hotel. And there were several types of residence hotels. The bottom one would be a cot in a room next to other cots. And that cot was 10 cents plus or minus a night, which was relatively affordable. And then the next tier up on that housing ladder was a cot in a cubicle of its own, essentially a curtain cubicle, much like a little trade show booth. So you had a five by 10 cubicle. And that was the second tier of the housing ladder. And the third tier of the housing ladder was a room with a sink. And that's also commonly known as a cold water flat. It was a cold water sink. There was no hot water.
SROs, right?
An SRO, right. And SRO hardly exists anymore. And then the second one, there's one in San Luis Obispo that's like this, it's called the Establishment. And was recently bought by a number of private people and saved from being turned into a hotel.
It's like 60 units or something?
No, it's 19 rooms.
19.
But the next tier up is a private room with its own bathroom. And, but those four tiers are, are the bottom. And that's like what Terry was talking about, this thing described for the replacement of the old ditch. If there was some sort of housing typology that had a range of housing that started out at the very, nowadays, we've stigmatized this. We call it a homeless shelter. It's not a residence hotel. A residence hotel, a guy in a suit with a briefcase would go there at night and sleep there. And it wasn't perceived, you know, there's pretty, a lot of famous people lived in residence hotels, you know? Kerouac lived in one for a long time in Slow. Anyway, these days, we call them homeless shelters and have stigmatized them with a lot of social pressure. And, and so everybody, whenever anybody talks about building one, the community jumps up and down and screams. But if it's, if it's, if it's defined slightly differently, I think that, I think that's a big piece missing. And maybe Morro Bay isn't exactly urban enough to do too much of that, but we could do some of that.
So take it a step further. Give us an example of what you're thinking.
An apartment building that had something less than studios as its smallest units, but it also had four bedrooms and three bedrooms and two bedroom units. And not all of those need to be market, I mean subsidized housing. Some of those probably should be market rate housing in order to subsidize the lowest of the low. I don't know that the way it all breaks down, sorry, is percentage wise and so forth. I just think the discussion needs to include that level, that low. I mean, in a downtown urban area, there should be residence hotels. I mean, in Slow, if you look at the old maps, the old Sanborn maps, which are 100 year old maps, you can see that there were probably 20 or 30 little SROs in downtown San Luis. The second story is above all these little units where there were rooms for let. And if you look at old signs, old photographs rather, you see the little sign in the window that says rooms for let.
Yeah, well, there is a reemerging of that. Cohousing is the current term.
Cooperative, yeah.
And we're looking at how to do that, right, nationally? And it's, it's rare. It's not too many.
So that's one, that's one typology I think we should include. And the other typology I think is ridiculously small lot subdivisions with floor area ratios for what gets built over them. And form based code, let's say, for what's get built, what gets built over them. Such that in a neighborhood which is otherwise maybe an R1 or R2 neighborhood. I'm not, I'm not talking about the three story tall giant things. I'm talking about tiny little lots with tiny little houses, primarily senior housing, I would think, and nothing bigger than maybe 800 square feet on, let's say, a 1600 square foot lot. But you could take a 6,000 or 7,000 foot lot and create four bungalows. You know, the second story would only be a loft inside the roof line. It wouldn't be, so you wouldn't be insulting the neighborhood with high housing, which is why R1 neighborhoods get insulted by high density housing because it ruins their privacy. But you could create smaller, but I hate that word, by design, but they would be small. And even these days, though, an 800 square foot house is going to cost you 300 grand to build on top of, let's say, you know, 80 grand for the lot. So you're still at 380, you're under, but you're around 400 grand, which scarily enough is, is less expensive than, than, that's the bottom now. I mean, you can't build a, you can't build anything with less than 400 square foot, $400 per square foot anymore. And the land per lot around here, the minimum lot size is 300 grand, but that's about as minimum price I've seen in Morro Bay. So you're going to have, if you split that, let's say it's a 6,000 square foot lot into two lots, it are three, then you're going to get 150 is the base land price, and you're going to get two, 380,000 square foot houses. You're going to have two 400,000 houses.
So while you're still talking, one of the things I think is interesting is this, this is a problem that's up and down the state. So it's not unique to us. But is there anything that makes Morro Bay unique? In other words, do we have a strength? Transportation is not one of them. But do we have a strength here? Like the mobile home parks could be seen as a strength, I think. And are there other things that maybe we could consider in the next three meetings that are specific, well crafted opportunities for us?
Privatizing or buying out the mobile home parks such that the owners could somehow, and subsidizing those purchases perhaps such that the owners of those units could then own the land because there's some parks in this county, in this area. I saw, there's a few in Los Osos that are owned by the, by the, by the mobile homeowners themselves. They own the land underneath their unit. And their HOA fees are dramatically less expensive than the ones that are owned by corporations. That, that's, we could probably create a lot of affordable housing by subsidizing the land underneath it.
Yeah, I mean, the one project in Slow is really interesting. I think it's a three story pre manufactured housing project. So they got unbelievable density within a mobile home park.
Are you talking about Dwight Downtown? Those units suck. Those are some of the worst constructed units I've ever seen. I mean, they, it's, and we, we don't even want to go into who built them.
Thank you. Anything else, Eric? You good? Michael?
Yeah, and I'm going to look at Michael because, you know, you're, you're interim. So, you know, you can take chances, you know, you don't have to worry about a job. So, but I like you because we have the same name, number one. Number two, we've been in this business for about the same time. About 30 years ago, I got into the business of, of being a, a housing advocate. About 30 years ago, I've lived, I lived in Silicon Valley, the Bay Area for 50 years. But about 30 years, I got in the game. Okay, so we had R1 developments, primarily R1 developments. Everybody wanted to build a home, right? If you would have told me 25 or 30 years ago that R1 would be gone, you can no longer build R1, I'd say you're crazy. But that's where we're at. 25, 30 years ago, we had very little tools in our toolbox to build housing. It was about attracting people, developers to that city, like what you were trying to say earlier, bringing them there for whatever, you know? And they came, they came to, at least the Bay Area, they came for several reasons they came. And in fact, the Bay Area is still the hottest market in the world for number of units, not pricing, number of units. So what's happened today, we've got all this new legislation. We've got to figure out how we're going to use the legislation for the benefits of the infrastructure development in the area of water, utilities, transportation. That's what I was trying to get at. There's tons of money, and if we don't tap into it, we're going to be left behind. So we've got to figure out if it's going to be a regional approach, let's go there to get some of that. Or leave it all, leave it all on the table, you know, we don't have to take any. So that's why I'm in favor of that approach because we can't do it alone. Morro Bay will never get to the point where we can do this probably alone. I think that's why the conversation of doing a regional approach has come up over and over and over again. And we've had somebody here that said that. And I'm going to bring up an example of what they've done. And I like Terry, by the way, Terry, thanks for the comment. But in, in the Bay Area, coming towards the central coast, farmers are now building homes for their workers. Okay, the farmers are building homes for their workers. That work, I don't want to tell you how much they make, they don't make a lot of money. They're building homes for their workers because they don't want them going away every day in their cars like they used to. You, you know, just drive down the central coast, you'll see a thousand cars. They're all working in the fields. Well, now you won't see as many because the farmers have moved to building homes for their workers. So that's kind of jumping on what Terry's saying about, right, Terry? So we've got to come up with these innovative, you know, and that may not work here, but they're doing everything everywhere to make it work. So I don't have time now to get into the things I want to talk about, but that's all I'll say for now. But I think a regional approach to our problem is going to provide the greatest number of units than we can do on our own.
Would you agree with that?
Yeah, and I think there's good recognition amongst the cities in the county. There is a housing action team that meets regularly to discuss these issues and to work on those regional issues. So I think those are good comments. And, you know, my only, you know, just feedback in general for the commission as we talk about housing is really, I, I think what would be most helpful in terms of the ideas and the, the thinking about the next 18 months is what have we already identified in our plans and documents? What is the city council already approved in terms of programs within our housing element, our land use element, et cetera, that are things to implement? And then what are, what are the priorities of the planning commission? And so, you know, for a future discussion for the planning commission, that would be something that planning staff could do, is we could distill work programs, work program items that are current, you know, programs supporting goals that are adopted that we can move forward with. And, and so I just suggest that because, you know, the topic of housing, we can, we can spend a lot of time and, and come up with some great ideas. But what's going to be more effective and more immediate is sticking to what's already in our plans.
Asia?
Yeah. I have, I kind of want to just, because I know we always focus on this regional effort, but I really want to push back on it because we're a wealthy community with assets to build on. And I would argue, instead of putting it to the region and ending up putting all affordable housing in one town, it's really the, every city's responsibility. I know, you know that, I know you're coming from that. And so I think the regional approaches essential, but we got to take responsibility for the number of units we've committed to. And wealthy towns need affordable housing for all, need a, you know, spectrum of affordable housing. And let's do that as a county as a whole, and let's implement locally. So think regionally, act locally.
And believe it or not, I totally agree with you. It's just that the, what I'm trying to emphasize is the number of laws, like 300 in the last two and a half years, 300 new laws regarding housing. That may push us somewhere we, right? We have to go anywhere regardless of what we think about local, regional. We've got to get there. Regardless, we've got to get to where the state is saying by law, we've got to get to.
So in addition, one of the policies that are on the list here for housing, things that the city has prioritized is about, around developing incentives. And I, I think it'd be worth looking at in one of these meetings, what incentives do we currently have in our tool belt or toolkit? Whatever the phrases. And what else can we do? And I think one of the, you know, hearing from Eric and this idea of four rungs of the ladder that we're not addressing, I think it'd be really interesting to look at as a jurisdiction, what is in our power to incentivize? And then what partners do we need to recruit to fill the gaps for areas we can't, we're not as a city able to incentivize? And specifically around, like what powers do we now have that ADUs are by right? And to some degree, and how can we incentivize some of those lower rungs of housing types via ADUs? You know, whether that means, how do we operationalize encouraging homeowners to turn their garage into a rental room? And, yeah, so looking at what's in our toolkit and like, how can we? I've worked in city, I've worked on the private side of city led incentive programs. And Sorry, Siri, it was gotten involved. On the private side, and I've seen it work in, you know, larger cities, incentive programs, getting private homeowners to do things. And so I am curious what, either countywide or locally, what our options are there? And it'd be great to hear more about.
Nice, thank you, Asia. We're getting close to wrapping this up, I think. Let me thank all the public comments. We had some really strong, I think, points were made. It was great to hear from everybody. But I think I'm not afraid of innovation and innovation can be focused, as Jeff Echols says. And I like the idea of innovation around specificity, that Morro Bay is not the same as everybody. So one of the things I think we'd like to do in the future is actually bring in some developers, some local contractors who can speak to some of these ideas. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned is quite often, in my experience as an architect and a planner and as a planning commissioner, development happens by getting the word out that you actually do have to market yourself. You have to find a way to not only make the, the job easier for the developer, but also to, to woo and attract and find those developers. We're at a really unique position right now in Morro Bay. Nobody's mentioned, you know, the, the battery storage, the PG and E plant. I think there's all kinds of housing opportunities, even in the big scale. Certainly, I think Sean Green mentioned the elementary school. That's an exciting one, too. And one of the keys, and Jeff will probably agree with this, that I've seen in my career, which has been a third of it has been affordable housing as an architect, is that if you can get a free piece of land or a low cost piece of land, you skip up the competition ladder. And if we're serious about that, I think there's innovative ways for us to find those opportunities here in Morro Bay. Somebody also mentioned, I think it was Terry, partnering with churches. You know, again, that's in a way kind of free land, or at least a way you can begin to look at it in a good partnership. The ADU thing is unique to us, too, and how we do that. The, you know, it's hard for me to give up on the idea of the mobile home parks. I think they're really interesting and they kind of fit us here. That being said, I'm not going to go much deeper than that, except that I think Asia and I will take into advisement some of this stuff. We'd love to sit down with Michael and Susanna and kind of talk it through. We'd love to sit down with Michael and Susanna and kind of talk it through. I'm not sure Michael's going to be supportive in all of this, but we'll give it a try and at least get your coaching on it and see. And, but certainly not to neglect anything that we're looking at in a bigger picture. But we do have the time right now as a group here to kind of focus on it. And, you know, the 3D effort that we've been doing for the downtown design district, what we hear again and again and again, how much people need workers in Moro Bay, how important workforce housing is. And that's nothing new. We all know it. But, you know, you look at some of these ideas of smaller units, co-op units, I think it's at least worth a consideration. So I guess I'll leave it there. Any final words, Eric?
Michael, I appreciate your thoughts on the city goals and policies being the directing, easiest route to the goal at this time, so we don't have to start from scratch, and I'll focus more on that. Thank you.
Mike?
No. I just appreciate Michael, you know, being here for, I hope, a couple more months and just doing some open field running with us. Okay?
Yeah, we're learning a lot from your value. And the attainable by design is, you know, that's really, affordable by design is a really interesting thing. Whether it works or not, not so sure, but it's really provocative to me. Asia, final word? Thank you all very much.
Oh, and I forgot, Bill, the chair, we're quick. And Kim, remember, when he leaves, you get to take over for what we're trying to do here.
That was new business. Any unfinished business, commissioners?
I had just a comment to make.
Please.
When we receive our commission packets, we're, like, this week, for instance, last week, we were giving a, I got an email at 3:40 about the packet being available, and at 4 o'clock, the office closes on Thursday, and on Friday, it's closed. And so unless you go really fast in your car from 3:40 until 4, you got 20 minutes to get your packet, otherwise you got to wait till Monday. So if there's any way to get these packets either somewhere else outside of the planning department so that we can pick them up, or they could be in San Luis, they were delivered to the planning commissioners, just some other way, so we don't only get them on Monday to review them for Tuesday night, it would be helpful.
Chair, I have one.
Michael?
When Scott left us, he said that the public community benefit item would come back to us soon. That was like three months ago. So, and the reason, I wish Sean were still here, but I think there's a connection between what we're trying to do here. I think housing can be considered a public benefit if you can make the right connections. Again, with the developer saying, okay, build this, but build five homes as well, that could be considered a public benefit.
So bring that item back if you need to.
Because there is a committee to do that work.
Asia? Community Development Director, Michael, final words.
Just thanks for the participation, both to the public and to the commission. And certainly, in terms of what my recommendations are, it's not affordable housing at the exclusion of any other type of housing. We're continuing to receive applications, and we'll be bringing housing projects in front of you, including, you know, significant subdivisions. But in terms of those extra efforts or where our limited resources can be brought to bear, I think that the policies bear out a focus on affordability, so.
Thank you for your focus, yes. Kim, welcome. Nice to have you. And if I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Ooh, one more.
Oh, one more comment?
I did want to just highlight for the commission that at the next meeting on May 7, we'll be meeting just to, for the planning commission to receive and make comments on the draft EIR for the Battery Energy Storage System project at the Moro Bay Power Plant. And so that's an opportunity for members of the public, who, we're currently in the comment period for the draft environmental impact report. Members of the public can send us email with their comments. They can, you know, write their comments and provide them to the city. However, this is an opportunity to come to the podium and just share those comments. And it's, no decisions are going to be made at that meeting. It's not a public hearing where there will be deliberation on the part of the planning commission. It's just for comments. So there'll be a presentation on the project from the applicants. There'll be a presentation from the EIR consultant on what the results of their analysis was and their conclusions. And then it'll be mostly a night of public comment, so it's, the planning commission gets to hear from the community. Community members get to hear from each other in terms of what their, what their comments are, yeah.
And just to keep track of everything, the master plan, is there anything scheduled on that?
And the next night, on May 8, at the Veterans Hall here, in this space, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on May 8, we're going to have another workshop on the master plan for the power plant. And that's intended to be sort of an unconstrained conversation with the community, just about their vision for the master plan in terms of what kind of development would occur there, and then how, you know, what kind of infrastructure would be needed to serve that development.
If I might suggest on that, there was some significant deliberation at the last master plan meeting, which revolved around the battery plant. And I think it needs to be very carefully articulated to the public that the meeting that evening should be about the master plan. Otherwise, it becomes this battery plant discussion, and that will dominate. Somehow, that needs to be articulated, I would say.
Yeah, and we're doing our best with the format to engage people on the future of the power plant. And the city's general plan requires a master plan for that property before any portion of it is developed or in conjunction with that. And so, you know, we really, whether, whatever, regardless of the disposition of the battery project, like, we need a master plan for the power plant, and so we've got to engage the community on that, and this is an opportunity to do that.
So who's hosting that? The city is hosting it?
The city is hosting it.
And then just to clarify, that the May 7 meeting is primarily for the public to make its comments. You're not really looking for all of our comments as the planning commission. We're receiving comments and listening and taking in, or are you also looking for all of our comments? Or is that the later meeting, I presume?
So individually, planning commissioners can make comments, which will be recorded by the EIR consultant and reflected in, you know, those responses will be provided in the final EIR. Not mandatory, you don't have to. There's no consensus or deliberation on the part of the planning commission?
Is this a planning commission meeting?
Yeah.
It is a planning commission meeting. You're hosting the event, essentially.
And I was going to ask as well, Michael, because I'm concerned about it, too. There's thousands of pages, right, that I've got to get through if I'm going to comment. So I'm not there yet, but, you know, so I'd rather receive, but just, this is a planning commission, you know, agenda item, the only one, but I'm trying to get there, to the point where I've reviewed the documentation, and I've got to do it. There's no hard copy. We're doing it online, of course, because of the number of pages.
Right. And comments are not required by planning commissioners. It's just an opportunity to do so. You can write your comments. You don't have to comment. You're, you know, at some point, the project may be in front of you. So, and again, these are EIR comments, and so it's really, it's not on the project, it's on the analysis of the environmental effects of the project that are in the EIR.
Yeah, that's why I bring it up, because if a planning commissioner makes comments such that they can be perceived as having an opinion, let's say, that might be perceived one way or another by an attorney for somebody, you just really ought to be careful what your comments actually are until we get to the actual deliberation where it's in front of the planning commission as a project.
And what I'm used to is that staff gives us, you know, they reviewed it, and they will give us, right, as our staff, their, you know, their perspective and recommendations. So I'm not, you're not there yet, and I'm not there yet, right? Is staff going to be giving that?
Well...
Or is the consultant going to be doing that?
The EIR is the city's work product.
Okay.
Okay, so your staff, I wasn't here at the time, we weren't here at the time, but your staff produced this EIR. This is a city document.
Really quick, where is that meeting?
Here.
Here, okay.
Yeah. May 7.
No, no, sorry. Where's the master plan meeting?
Also here.
Okay.
On the 8th.
On the 8th, 68.
And there's no issue?
Correct.
Us attending? We're going to be here the 7th. There's no issue with all of us being here in the crowd, just?
Nope. You can attend. So again, May 7, Planning Commission, 6 p.m. here at the Vets Hall. May 8, master plan workshop here, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Vets Hall.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Thank you all very much. Good night.